To the Board of Public Works this past year, we've had our fair of struggles at the wastewater plant with excess sludge and you know, we've talked about HP Hood, former Crowley's. Some of the struggles that they've been having, which has created a problem for us. But also, you know, they're not the only heavy industrial user that we have to deal with on Rich's end of things. So, you know, part of what this grant would do would help identify, you know, what exactly is coming into the plant from these heavy users? So we can, you know, better address these issues and, you know, and even, even, you know, permitting, having permits in place for these users, which Rich and I, I think we've had those in the past, you know, maybe what 10 years ago or so?
Yes, Your Honor, they periodically need to be refreshed.
Yeah. So, you know, I think we're just at that point where we need to start exploring some of these avenues to try to mitigate some of the problems that we've been having over the past year or so, you know, so they don't keep on happening. And, and this is really just being proactive. And, and I thank Matt Higgins for bringing this to our attention. There's a lot of grants out there, you know, not every grant fits every need, but sometimes you have to kind of really hone in on, you know, what we can do with a particular grant, what we could use it for, how could it benefit the city? And, you know, this one, I think definitely would, would have a benefit to us. So with that, I'll, I'll let Rich kind of get into it. He can, he can talk into, you know, more detail than I can on the, you know, the struggles and some of the things that we've been seeing at the plant. I know we've touched base a little bit of, you know, on the council level, but we've talked about it ad nauseam at the Board of Public Works over the last several meetings. So, so Rich, if you want to just kind of give a little bit more background, go right ahead.
Thanks, Your Honor, and, and thank you to the council members for this special meeting tonight. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you at the special session. My main goal tonight is to explain why we want to apply for the grant and then to introduce to you Matt Higgins from La Bella Associates, who can answer some of your technical questions about the application process and the work we hope to accomplish with that grant. Matt Higgins and I began talking about refreshing this industrial user program with what's called a headworks analysis last year. And this is just something, it's a vehicle for the city sewage treatment plant to protect the workers that work at the sewage plant, to protect the sewer from noxious chemicals and grease that would block the sewer, or from chemicals that would pass through our biological facility and then proceed right into the Canastio River untreated. So last week, Matt called me and told me about this year's round of engineering planning grants and told me that the deadline is February 12th. So that's why we needed to call the special meeting to have the council approve or disprove our application process. The state will not accept an application from an engineering firm if there isn't this action by a council first. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Branch, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, makes these engineering and planning grants available annually. And the city has used them recently to fund a couple of engineering studies. I'd like to explain to you briefly how we use them. The most recent grant was for $30,000 to study the best method to achieve ultraviolet disinfection of our plant effluent. And with that $30,000, we looked at different types of systems. One was chlorine-based treating of the effluent, and the other is ultraviolet light. And we looked at all kinds of equipment. We even went out to a couple of area facilities that have installed ultraviolet equipment lately and talked to people about their successes and failures in installing this Trojan equipment that we have chosen for our plant. And this is a mandate from the DEC that we have to install the UV light. But with this $30,000 grant, we were able to prove through testing and analysis that this Trojan system will work. And the grant for $30,000 comes with a $20,000 city participation portion that is generally almost 100% fulfilled through the labors of my staff and I collecting samples and doing footwork.
Rich, that's a 20% match, correct?
The 20% match, that's right. The total cost of that project was $30,000. Our share was $6,000. And we contributed that $6,000 through our la- labor of collecting samples and writing reports. And so we know that this Trojan system will work through this grant study that we went and looked at, and it helped us choose the best equipment. Similarly, back in 2013, we had a problem, and we still have this problem with our anaerobic digesters. And we sought a $25,000 grant at the time that funded a study where we looked at all the equipment we would need to update the anaerobic digesters. We came up with seven different options for the city to choose from to update the digesters from $2 million all the way up to $8 million for Cadillac systems that would, would take care of our needs as far as those digesters go. And ultimately, the city decided not to proceed with any of the fixes, but we still have this study on the shelf. And, and if we were to see some level of participation from the state or federal government for infrastructure work through grants made available to municipalities like us, then we would go and get this digester study and proceed to start the plan and execute it with, with much of the, the beginning work done. So these engineering planning grants are valuable. They're place some of the cost on, on the state government and, and they're kind of nice that in these tough times when funding is, is not very much available, it, it helps us to be able to go out and, and do this kind of work. I want to talk to you a little bit about the, the reason for us going out and, and doing this work outside the facility in the industries. These industries from Alstom to the St. James Hospital new facility and Crowley Dairies produce strange and, and unique waste concentrations that are difficult to manage with a biological treatment facility. And this is a mandate for any treatment facility our size and bigger like Hornell's. We go out and monitor these facilities a couple of times a year. Well, in, in the case of Crowley's, we go to their facility every day and we collect flow data, pH solids and organics loading data to charge them a fee to treat their waste on a daily basis. And with this, we have ongoing conversation with Crowley's employees and we try to head off problems as they occur. Most of the waste that we treat at the sewage plant is the domestic variety that comes from our homes, from our kitchens and our bathrooms. And this is easily treated in our biological system. The bacteria like this food that comes in constantly and we're able, able to keep them happy with a constant pH and oxygen levels that meet their needs. But with industrial waste, you run into concentrations and volumes that are not easily treated by a biological treatment facility, that is bacteria. So what we have to do is try to talk to these facilities, these industries and ask them have treatment facilities such as the case with Alstom, they have their own treatment facility, and Crowley's, they treat their own waste. And we issue sewer use permits to these industries that are crafted by looking at the data. We at the plant have a mandate from the DEC to monitor five different industries in Hornell. We monitor these factories by taking samples and testing them to see what is in the waste. And with this data, we can compare the test results and make sure that the industries are obeying the city sewer ordinance, and that protects our bacteria. It protects our workers from noxious chemicals. It is now time to renew this monitoring system with a new headworks analysis, and that will help us monitor these five industries going into the future. With Matt Higgins designing the headworks analysis, the operators will set up a sampler at the sewage treatment plant, and then we'll go out and we'll set up samplers at the five industries. And on any given day, we will sample both the sewage plant and those five industries. And from that data that we collect from the laboratory, we'll have a, a total picture of the waste coming in the sewage treatment plant over a course of 24 hours. And we'll also have a little snapshot of each of the contributions from each of the five industries. And so it's a mass balance equation. You look at the total picture of the plant's waste and each industry's contribution with all of those pollutants, and you're better able to understand their contribution to the system. You're better, better able to monitor them. And then in the end, you can issue them a permit and say, look, you produce this much of this chemical that is not compatible with a biological treatment system. You need to curb this through a treatment process in your facility. And we also give them a permit for testing. Crowley's, like I said, is 365 days a year. The other facilities such as St. James and Alstom have semi-annual testing responsibilities. The sewer use ordinance is designed to protect the sewers and, and the sewage plant from having breakdowns caused by industrial waste. We know if we pour grease down the drain, it won't be long before our drain pipes will be clogged. Similarly, we want to limit the input of noxious chemicals that endanger the health of the wastewater treatment plant operators and the bugs. We also want to protect the bacteria, like I said. And with that, that's my basic explanation of a sewer use ordinance program and an industrial monitoring program. And I want to introduce Matt Higgins from La Bella Associates and ask him to speak specifically about the process of applying for the grant. Matt, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. How are you?
All right. Good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Matt Higgins. I'm a, I'm a water wastewater engineer from La Bella. I, I really appreciate the invitation to attend this special session. I appreciate you, you all calling and attending the special session to hear more about this opportunity. I, I also asked La Bella's Christina Owens, who's a senior planner, to, to call in and join us in the meeting. If there are any specific, on your related questions that I'm unable to answer, she's, she'll have the answer. So I appreciate the opportunity. I think Rich gave a very thorough explanation of, of the history of, of the development of such a program and why it's, why it's an important piece of a community's sewer ordinance. I think it's, you know, I've been in touch with Rich recently and I've, I've heard some of the issues the treatment facility has recently experienced due to discharges from industrial users, specifically, I believe, HP Hood, Crowley Foods. And so just to give you a little bit of right regulatory history, this goes back to the 1980s where the EPA decided that they should amend the Clean Water Act and include toxic and pre-treatment effluent standards so that communities similar to Hornell would have the opportunity and, and the legal ability to regulate the discharges from industrial users to, as Rich described, keep the facility and the facility's operators in, in good working condition. So how it's typically done is, is industries have some level of pre-treatment of their own discharge at their own facility before it discharges into the city's collection system. So the, the industry themselves are responsible for removing a certain amount of each contaminant before they send it into the city system. So to, to prevent the types of problems with, to the Rich described and, and to keep the collection system and the treatment facility in, in good working condition, what's often done is a headworks analysis, like Rich described. So this is a, it includes sampling and analysis and testing. But without going too far into the weeds with it, essentially what it does is it examines the treatment facility's capacity to remove certain contaminants. And then it says, okay, well, a certain amount of that capacity is reserved for use by our residential and our commercial customers. And then whatever is remaining is able to be used by industries. And so contaminant-specific discharge limits are then calculated for each contaminant so that the treatment facility is not overwhelmed and worrisome levels of contaminants don't pass through the facility and subsequently into the Canastio River. So that's just a bare bones description of the headworks loading analysis. And in 2011, the city hired Lou engineers to, in, in response to a mandate by the DEC, Lou engineers was hired by the city to lay the foundation for an industrial pre-treatment program. And so Lou engineers and, and the city worked together and developed a report and completed a headworks analysis. And one of the most significant recommendations in that report, their requirements, is it to be updated from time to time to make sure that, for example, the list of, of industrial users is still current and up to date and to make sure that the, the treatment facility's capacity is still appropriate for the local limits that are included in the sewer ordinance. So to my knowledge, it's, it's been 10 years since that 2011 study, since, since the headworks analysis has been conducted for this facility. So when, when Rich and I were speaking about this, it happened to coincide with the governor's announcement of the availability of this grant program, which is typically offered annually, although it's, it's typically not as tight of a deadline as this. So the grant program is administered by the DEC and the Environmental Facilities Corporation. And like I mentioned, they authorize it annually and they issue grants of up to $100,000 maximum for large communities, but often much smaller. And in each case, a 20% local match is required. So these grants, you know, they're called engineering planning grants, and they are specifically for this type of study where the, the community has, has identified that there is a, a certain problem or existing condition that is, that is less than optimal at their facility or in their collection system. And they'd like to hire someone or, or to fund a thorough engineering evaluation in an attempt to examine the alternatives to solve that issue. So in this case, the, like Rich mentioned, the application for the funding is due February 12th. That application would include, you know, it would have to include approved resolutions from the council as well as a, a scope of work for the study. So the resolutions that I believe will be presented before you this evening, there, there are two of them. One of them is, is authorizing the 20% local match for completing, for if the funding were approved, authorizing the, the city to match the 20%. And the second one is confirming that under, under the State Environmental Quality Act SEACER, this would be classified as a type two action, so it would not be subject to SEACER review. So those are the two resolutions that are required in any, in any, you know, funding application package to the state like this. And so those are the two, I believe, before you this evening. So I'm happy to answer further questions. I, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and be here with you tonight. It's nice to see you all. And yeah, that's about it.
Hey, Matt. The grants for 25,000, right? So the 20% match, does that make it 30,000 total funding or 20,000?
20,000.
20,000.
So, so the, the 20% local match is for the total requested amount. So if the total requested amount is 25, then the state would potentially chip in 20 and the city would have to match five.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And as Rich alluded to, you know, some of that portion, Jim, you know, wouldn't just be, you know, simply cutting a check could be, you know, in-kind work.
That's right. We'll have to collect data and we'll have to set up samplers. And so our hourly rate that the operators and I are paid by the city would be used in a force account against the $5,000 contribution. So services of, of the wastewater operators will be used to pay a majority of that 20%.
Hey, Rich, how does the new Alstom building that they're going to build out on Shawma, does that factor into this at all?
Is, I, I don't, is that going to be part of Alstom, Jim?
I, I thought it was. I, I don't know that for a fact.
So Alstom has two facilities that we monitor in our industrial monitoring system. And so going forward, we would have to make contact with them and talk to them about whoever goes in there, right? Trikene Tile Works, for example, was a part of our industrial monitoring program until they left town. And then the next people that came in are the people that, the paint store.
Stroblles.
Right? I'm sorry, who, who are they?
Stroblles.
Stroblles, yeah. They're, they are kind of a depot for, for selling industrial supplies. And so they don't meet the minimal requirements for industrial monitoring.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah. And a new facility would be Alstom up on Shawma to build the, the cars, car shells, Jim.
Yeah. So metal forming processes, welding, et cetera, can very often lead to a real need for industrial monitoring because we have a beneficial reuse of our bio solids. We land apply our sludge to farmers' fields for fertilizer, and it has to meet stringent guidelines for metals, cadmium, chromium, all those strange metals. We test them six times a year and they have to meet rigid guidelines for land application. So in that case, we would ask Alstom's, what, what industrial processes will you be conducting up there? Is it metal plating? Well, that's, that's a difficult one to marry with a wastewater treatment plant that's biological in nature. So they would have to put in some kind of industrial treatment process at that facility before they'd be allowed to hook up to the sewer line.
Mitch, do you have anything to? Mitch, do you want to add anything?
No, John, I think Matt and Rich have covered it really well. Our force account and time and materials should cover the 20% match without a problem. We've done it more in the past that way. It's pretty much a no-brainer grant for us and it will help us in the long run.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. You know, and one of the things that, you know, and Matt and Rich kind of touched on it is identifying not just the users, but the percentage of what they use because, you know, ultimately, you know, our residents are footing, you know, the bill to operate the, the wastewater facility. We want to make sure that, you know, they're, they're not overextended and, you know, taking on more responsibility than they should be, you know, with all these industrial users that, you know, and like I said, we've, we've talked about it ad nauseam at the Board of Public Works over the last several months in relation to HP Hood. So it's really, you know, taking those proactive steps and safeguarding us going down the road, make sure that, you know, we have all these safeguards in place.
Now, now, is there a timeframe for the study? Length of time or, or a timeframe that it has to be done by or?
Well, go ahead, Rich.
I, I, I don't know what the timeframe would be to conclude the study. I'm, I'm sure it would be a, a year from the date of the award.
Okay, yeah.
It would have to be awarded first, Dan.
Right, right.
Not a, not a done deal. We have to, you know, get, get the application in and, and, you know, keep our fingers crossed and hopefully it will be awarded and.
Right. I just didn't know if they'd had a, you know, a timeframe, six month, a year, you know, two-year study that was.
The two previous engineering planning grants that we had, we were given a year to complete the study.
Got you.
Rich, am I understanding this right? Is this, are we after an ultraviolet system? Is that what we're trying to get?
That was a grant that we used, that we applied for in 2017. And the result of that grant was choosing a Trojan ultraviolet disinfection system. And that construction project will start shortly, May of this year, with a completion date of May 2022. We will start treating the effluent with ultraviolet light.
But that's separate from this grant that we're talking about tonight, John.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure I had that straight. Okay, thank you.
So, hey, Rich, I want to just say hello to Rich for a second. It would be great if, if there was an opportunity to see this firsthand. Is there any way, maybe, I'm sure there's other council members that might like to have a tour, is that possible?
Oh, anytime. Welcome. In the past, the mayor and Alderman Basset and McCumskey have toured the facility and we love company down there.
Great. That'd be great. And then the other thing, so when it comes to Alstom just being in rail for 30 years, most of the caustic plating, metal treatment, hardware plating, CE2, CE3, it's usually done prior to the assembly line. So let's hope, other than paint and things like that, let's hope that doesn't become another issue. All right. Thank you. Great, great to see you, Rich.
Good to see you, Rich. Does that happen in Mexico or South America somewhere?
A lot of that, a lot of that happens everywhere.
Yep.
Generally not on site.
Good.
And I would, I would encourage the council members, you know, when you have time or the weather is nice, you know, get out and tour the, the wastewater facility and, you know, maybe down the road when the water treatment plant is, you know, wrapped up, you know, take a drive up there some afternoon and take a tour. You know, these, these facilities, and, and I, and I talk about it, you know, here and there, but they're, they're really amazing facilities and things that we do take for granted, you know, when, when you turn on the water or you flush a toilet, and most people don't really think twice about the process on either end. But, you know, these are operations that run constantly, you know, every second of every day, and, and they're vital operations and a lot goes into them. And, and I give credit, we have two really professional, phenomenal operators in, in Rich Dunning and Leonard Fucci, and they, they do just an amazing job at each of their facilities and, and take great pride in their facilities as well. And they have good team members, you know, and certainly, you know, Rich has seen his fair share of challenges this past year, but, you know, they, they tackle them head-on each and every time. And, you know, and I, I give Rich credit for just, you know, continuing to be proactive and, you know, trying to head off some of these issues that we've been seeing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does anyone have any other questions before? Does anyone have any other questions before we get into the pair of resolutions? Oh, all right. Well, Missy, you want to go ahead and read the first resolution?
I do. I just want to let you know that Jim Bassett is just rejoining us. Dropped out a minute ago, so he is just coming back in. So first resolution. Whereas the city of Hornell is considering retaining the services of a professional engineering firm to conduct a study of inputs into the water pollution control plant in Hornell to be undertaken with funding from the Environmental Facilities Corporation as part of the two thousand and twenty engineering planning grant program pursuant to an application to be submitted under the consolidated funding application. Therefore, be it resolved that in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review regulations, the common council has determined that the proposed action is a type two action under six C R R N Y six one seven point five C twenty-seven, which states that twenty-seven conducting concurrent environmental engineering economic feasibility and other studies and preliminary planning and budgetary processes necessary to the formulation of a proposal for action, provided those activities do not commit the agency to commence, engage in or approve of such action is not subject to SEACER review. Further resolved, the common council will take no further action with regard to SEACER for this project as type two actions are not subject to review under SEACER.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, John Carbone, second. Second by Melissa. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Poncello?
Yeah.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
I think we lost Rich for a second.
He's muted.
There he is.
I'm sorry, yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yeah.
Bassage? Carbone?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. And the second resolution, twenty percent match.
Resolved, common council of the city of Hornell hereby authorizes the mayor as the official representative of the city of Hornell to execute and submit a wastewater infrastructure engineering planning grant application to the Environmental Facilities Corporation Administrative Agency for the Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty program for grant funds not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for a study to address inputs into the city's water pollution control plant and authorizes the mayor to sign the funding agreement with EFC and any associated documents. And be it further resolved that the common council of the city of Hornell hereby commits that it will provide a minimum of twenty percent in cash from local funds as the required match for the cost of the study as specified in the grant application.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion? I will. Motion by Dan Warner, second by Jessica Cleveland. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Poncello?
Yeah.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yeah.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yeah.
Bassage?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. And that concludes our business today. I I just again want to thank you, everyone, for, you know, taking the time out for the special meeting. Matt, thank you for attending. Christina, thank you. Rich and Mitch, thanks for providing all those details. You know, usually the Board of Public Works or Board of Public Safety, we really get into the weeds on a lot of these things. So it's it's nice to have some of the department heads join us in these meetings so the council can get really a a more in-depth picture of, you know, what's going on in in these areas. You know, I I try to give you an idea of what's happening, but, you know, I I'm not there all the time like Rich is. So, you know, it's really nice to have him do this occasionally. So we'll you know, as the year progresses, we'll have the, you know, police chief or fire chief and kind of sprinkle in department heads along the way. So you know, we can take a kind of a deeper dive into some of these departments and and, you know, give the council a kind of a a clear picture of what's going on. Anyway, thank you, everyone. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
John Allison, second by Jim Bassett. Any questions? Call the roll.
Poncello?
Yeah.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yeah.
Bassage?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks for the support. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, Rich.
Guys, bye-bye.
You.